I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Any other roll call, please?
Uh, Jeff Penzine.
Here.
Angela Willis.
Here.
David Newbell.
Here.
Keith Reader-Holm.
Here.
Lynn Shait.
Yes, ma'am.
Dan Crimmens.
Here.
Mike Donlin.
Here.
Okay, first with, um, with regard to tonight's agenda. Everyone's had a chance to look at that. I guess I would note just one addition. And I don't know if we would amend the agenda to include that, but we do have a new correspondence from Vesper. Should that be added to the agenda for this evening's?
Yeah, I can add it. Under Communication and Notice that we can put A.
Seven A, Vesper Energy Letter.
Right.
Is that Communication or would that be considered this carries?
No, it's Communication.
Uh, that modification aside, any other comments, changes, additions to the agenda? I entertain a motion to...
I make a motion, we accept today's agenda for number seventy with the added Communication for Vesper.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. The agenda's approved. Then moving next to the minutes from our last scheduled meeting on October twentieth. Might be the longest.
Wait, no.
Representation of minutes. Though we might breathe tenure here, but yeah, special recognition to Danielle.
Good job.
Danielle, take that in the minutes. You were complimented.
Thank you.
No, for real. I mean, that was a long minute. She watched the videos, went through the notes. So, thank you very much. The only, Danielle, you and I kind of discussed this.
Mm-hmm.
Um, just with regard to the motions, if anyone's... I want to make sure that the motions, as reflected in the minutes, meet with everyone's recollection of the, um, the votes and what we received then. As I understood it, two motions. Uh, the first one was to very simply resolve or dissolve, I should say, the IO. Correct?
Yep.
And then the second one, um, was kind of a forward-looking, um, motion, which I guess we're going to initiate or launch tonight. And that is, where do we go, um, from here? With regard to kind of weaving this into the master plan and to gleaning, you know, public sentiment and, um, just the flavor of what our local community really wants from the township when it comes to governing, instituting, permitting, um, green energy, broadly speaking. So, I thought those were the two motions, um, but possibly there was a third. And I'm not sure if that touched upon something different that related to the public meeting we're going to have in January, or if it was just, um, generally speaking, a, a ju- a discussion that was going to start here tonight with regard to, you know, what, what the, how we glean public sentiment on that issue, the green energy issue.
So, the third that you know, and that's with Haven. We've done the motion, basically saying a text amendment to amend the zoning ordinance to address alternative energy. And then it's still this, right? On the solar best. I believe that's the motion that you're referring to. It's the third motion. And I think that, that kind of will end up, I think, on the bottom. But that would be the output of, of what I did. It would be an output of, for example, the master plan, the discussions that we're going to have here in coming, a couple of months, three months, or however time that takes to sort that out, to get that in the ordinance. But I think we needed to have something on record to say that we, we want to have something integrated in our ordinance. So, the second motion and the third motion kind of say the same thing. Except the third motion's a little bit more detailed of make it very specific to say, "in our ordinance", to go through and, and get that addressed. And that, that was my interpretation.
Thank you, Angela. Mike?
So, um, and I think the minutes pick it up that I did say amending the motion that was previously made. I don't recall a roll call prior to that, though. I can't remember if we voted on that. I thought I amended it prior to a roll call vote. That would, uh, amend the motion for, um, the, the what new text amendment, right? Um, that would concur with the master plan. And then we started talking about committees and we started talking about all that stuff.
Right.
So, it was, it was an amendment to that motion. And then I thought we took a roll call after that, but apparently you was in the recording.
These are words for word. I watched the video over. I read it over.
We did a roll call and then we kind of backtrack. You know, we started talking. And then we, we kind of went through and did the third and we never really rescinded the second.
The, the intent...
It's okay.
The intent was to, uh, have that amended to the, the motion that was made and seconded by Newbell, the draft of WIIO text amendment to address solar wind batteries for large scale self-care or future facilities on residential properties through the master. Then it go down here and, and if I, I'm sorry if I went out of order around there because usually I would catch that before I would vote on that, but maybe that's where the discussion went. And would like to amend this motion, but the motion was already rolled and approved. So, I bet that was an amendment to that motion. I don't know if it's a third, but it's a little more detailed with the master plan process.
I, I guess the minutes speak for themselves. You know, given the discussion here tonight, I think the, the discussion we will have, we'll kind of clarify, as I understand what I'm hearing, we'll clarify the intention of the commission for future purposes.
That'd be great.
Yeah. Okay. Any other thoughts or modifications for the minutes?
On page three of the minutes, come to my local county. Someone suggested that everyone get together to buy the property back from Vesper. You don't own it, do they?
Nope.
You just have a lease on it, right?
Yeah, yeah.
But that is what they said.
That is what was said. I recall it specifically because it was so, um, original.
I know you guys are, at last meeting, they said buy it from the owner.
Yeah, I don't think they meant from Vesper. They meant from the owner, yeah.
In the, from last Monday.
What they meant and what they said, or what they said is what I wrote down.
At our meeting, at this meeting, last meeting, they said buy it from Vesper. At the Monday board meeting, somebody suggested, why don't we all get together and buy it from the owner? So that...
Yeah, I never heard that.
Well, for purposes of the minutes reflecting the discussion at the last commission meeting, it is correctly recited.
Correct. I just wanted to let you know that somebody threw that out at the last meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Board meeting.
All right, any other comments on the minutes from our last meeting? Think substantially they're, they're accurate then? I would entertain a motion to approve.
I make a motion, we approve the PC meeting minutes from October twenty, twenty-five.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and opposed? Okay, the motions are approved, or the minutes are approved. Thank you. All right, um, so back to our agenda amended. To include item seven A, we have the correspondence notification of call up from Vesper, which followed closely on heels of our dissolution or hope to dissolve the, um, the text. Was it amended?
A C R O.
The C R O. Or the I O.
Oh, sorry.
The I O. Any insight or background on, is this just our notification?
Yep, so the letter is required under state stature. They are starting the state process. Um, so they're required to notify us. We have so many day, as the township, you have so many days to respond to let them know if you have a C R O, because if you did, then you'd follow that kind of processing. Um, and so, this is starting that process. And so, a formal application, it will be filed at the state. They do provide that. And that's why they're going to schedule that public meeting forum in the township. It's required under state stature. Um, but they are following a different set of rules. They're going through the state.
So, is there any value in us creating a O I O anymore?
Well, it depends. Um, so the one thing we can't tell in our crystal ball is, is this the only project or will there be others? Um, and so, it, to some extent, um, maybe, um, to be frank, I, I can't tell you into the future. That's something that, once we actually develop something, maybe they abandon the state process and do the local process. I have no idea, um, as far as what they're thinking. Um, but some of these uses are not going away. And so, it depends if you want to put the energy in now while you still are educated on the topic as opposed to wait two years and see if someone else wants to come in and ask for something similar or not.
Guess my point of view on this, I mean, something jokingly and vague. But my point of view on this is, quite frankly, this is right here. Let them go to the state, let them do whatever they think they need to do. But I think we need to stay focused in terms of getting our ordinance addressed when it comes to renewable energy and doing the due diligence and the effort without them rushing. We need thirty days and we have to, uh, do a while just to satisfy this. I need, I, I think we need to just stay focused.
So, we need a I O that covers all alternative energies?
I'm not saying a I O.
Uh, we'll get to that part. This is just under correspondence. So, they're, they're starting the state process and so the township will officially respond back in the appropriate capacity.
Take it from there.
Yep, and we'll just keep you abridged as that public meeting comes forth. It's not like it would be at our planning commission meetings. Typically, the, I don't know how all jurisdictions have handled it, but some specifically hold it as separate meetings. Because though public input is important, it's, it's really not up for the planning commission because they're going through the state process, but it is important to provide our input.
So, Caitlin, I guess for the benefit of the people who came tonight and for this commission myself certainly, are you able to speak to the process at this point or what can be expected in the near term with regard to, you know, what this correspondence has initiated through the state? What does that, what does that mean as far as who oversees? You know, I know this is spelled out in Public Act two thirty-three in detail, but you've seen it in, in, you know, real life or real time, I'm sure.
Yep, one of my other clients, one of my other clients is going through this. They received the official correspondence. The fact I don't know is how prepared they are. So, if they've already prepared their paperwork and submitted, they can move forward with scheduling that local public hearing that's supposed to happen. And that's required under state stature. Um, and that's what the Public Service Commission is going to verify you followed that process. Um, I do know from one of my other clients that had this, they had an incomplete application, um, for their public hearing. And so, they did not proceed. They actually are, they were now being rescheduled to January. They were supposed to have it early November because they just had incomplete application to then provide at their public hearing. So, they were delayed self-inclined. So, that is positive, at least from some level of oversight. They aren't letting incomplete applications be processed. And so, I'm waiting to see what that happens, but part of it is how complete their package is once they held that public process and then seeing how they go through the state. But they're only required to have the one local.
And, and so, is that actually put in place by the local community or the local governing authority? Or is this something that the MPSC, like, will they go about scheduling the public hearing and posting, you know, notification to affected residents? Or is that all the responsibility of, you know, Groblin Township?
It's the applicant's responsibility. The township, uh, yes. So, the, the company is the, um, required entity to do that with the township's awareness of that.
Right, gotcha.
Um, so, a- as far as I understand. And so, that's why they're notifying you and then they go to the next step. Once you kind of correspond with them back, then they start working on scheduling when that meeting would take place in your community.
Okay.
So, if they choose to do that at the fire hall or if you choose to do it here, that's something that's discussed.
Okay, thank you.
The, um, also too, because I know that being that it's Groblin Township, they're probably going to be focused on Groblin Township residents. But can we, do we have a say to say no, no timeout? Do we also need to invite the, the other impacted townships that border up to the property? Like, for example, Holly and...
Peetendance.
All right, Independence, right.
Um...
How does that work in terms of Vesper determining who gets invited to this public hearing?
Well, these are public meetings, so it's not like they check your ID at the door. But, but the only, the only status that they have to do is your jurisdiction. That's my understanding. So, if the project went into a neighboring township, they'd have to include that township. But I don't believe they have the same public hearing notifications where if it's within three hundred feet, because it's not a special lane use. They have a different state process that they follow for that. And so, that's something the township can choose to do to make sure that their township hall knows and the greater public at large.
Yeah, that's my problem is...
It's not meant to be, it's not meant to be secret, but, um, that is not, I don't believe that's Vesper's job to tell them, um, other jurisdictions. They're only required to tell the one they're in.
Okay, so basically, we would, the township would take it on if Groblin would like to make sure that the other impacted communities would be aware of the notice and some of the better information.
Sure, or public.
Okay, any other thoughts or questions regarding the Vesper notification? Okay, um, we will then move to item ten. On tonight's agenda, new business really the, is the, the main reason, um...
Oh, did you want to do nine, which is public comment, new business?
I was just wondering about that. Is there...
Yep, so it's public comment on new business. So, if any members of the public...
I was going to say, what's the new business?
It's the text amendment under ten.
Oh, okay, for tonight's new business. Do that before we have the discussion? Um, okay. So, thoughts or comments from you who came tonight regarding... And again, this is a collaborative, um, intended to be collaborative because we, as, you know, you heard back on October twentieth, we want to, you know, tackle the, the broad concept of green energy and devise, um, an ordinance that is, um, I guess mirrors the intentions of the local community when it comes to, you know, our spirit and appetite for, for moving forward. Obviously, a lot of this, um, will be coming in our direction regardless of local governing ordinance or regulations. But, uh, to the extent that we can amend our ordinance to incorporate, uh, some, you know, some guardrails, uh, that's where we intend to go starting tonight. So, anybody who's here, um, I guess I would just invite some thoughts or comments regarding, you know, looking forward as we begin the text amendment process. Yes, sir, your name?
Sure, my name is Steve Ford. I'm a Grinch Hall relative. I've been here before. One of the things that we wanted to come to the planning commission meeting is what we've seen in the master plan that we've been doing and we're required every five years to update it, and that's what we're doing. We want to make sure that the master plan reflects similarly to what it was five years ago. We don't want to see the master plan change to become an industrial corridor for, for any of these different options they're talking about. And when we talk about green energy, that's a whole different conversation, whether it's green or not. But we don't want to be the industrial, at least this side of the table doesn't. So, we, we were coming and we wanted, so we want to come to the planning meeting to listen to what you're planning and what that looks like. And we want to be part of that process and, uh, and be an active participant. We're not opposed to the, to the whole thought process behind it, but we're looking from a distinct, a standpoint of location, sighting and, and the oversight on that. And so, we're, we're confused on some things and we're learning. We've learned a lot in a very short period of time. I think you have too. And so, while we're here, that's why I'm here to, like, the comment is, that's why I'm here. I want to, I want to listen to you on what we're doing with the master plan and I want to make sure it's been excluding some of the activities that are being targeted at, at our community. I'm not saying that we can stop it. What I'm saying is I don't want that part, we don't, I don't want to welcome that in here. So, I want to make that clear. And the other thing, I'd like, thank you for the cookies.
It pays to get here early, doesn't it?
You gotta get here.
Your last name?
Ford, F-O-R-D.
Steve Ford?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Uh, anybody else?
Uh, Craig Smith, S-M-I-T-H. We were at the MPSC meeting or I think it was.
October twenty-second.
Yeah. And afterwards, I managed to, mentioned to one of the, uh, commissioners from the board. I says, because they were talking about data centers, big town. A lot of people were, were talking about data centers and the amount of water they need to cool them. Plus, of course, the energy too, but basically it was the water because then it comes back to the same issue that we're going to have around here, in my opinion anyways, is water usage. Because the well water is not infinite. Eventually, you're going to run out or it's going to be so depleted that your well's going to have to be re-drilled. But I, I mentioned to them, I says, isn't there such a thing as geothermal cooling units? I mean, I'm not a cooling engineer. I have no idea. And that's what I told them. I says, but is that something that the, the board or the planning commission or engineering firms or whoever should look at with cooling tubes or something? I don't know, so, again, you don't, you're not using all the water. You're just recycling the same water. In my logic anyways.
Okay, noted. Thank you, Craig. Um, other comments? Anyone? Yes, ma'am?
I just kind of have a follow-up to his. My name is Erica Collie.
Where?
Um, I, we actually live in Holly Township, right on the border of Groblin. We're about a mile from this proposed location for the best system. But, um, obviously, data centers are a huge topic right now. And since we're talking about master plan, is that also something that is going to be addressed? Because that is equally, equally if that's bad. I just want to make sure that that's kind of in the...
It is. It's kind of all walked in, so...
Yeah, yeah, okay. Thank you.
And how do you spell your last name?
C-O-L-L-E-Y.
Okay, thank you, Erica. Any other comments from those who are here?
Yes, I'll go. It's Melissa Ford. I'm in this white, I'm a Grinch Hall.
She'll admit that today.
And, and I, I agree with everything that's been said here. And I, and I agree, we want to, I think the focus is we work together and we want to make sure that, um, we're keeping this a recreation destination, not an energy industrial corridor. I think that's why we all moved here and I think that's where we get so passionate is we don't want to see it turn into an energy industrial corridor. And of course, once you allow one end, the rest is going to follow. So, I think we really have to be prepared. This is going to be quite a fight, right? I think that, um, zoning is going to be critical. I'll be honest, I have a little bit of a concern that we had Jim Christopher on the board and now he's on the zoning commission and there was a conflict of interest. And I'm just going to put it out there that I'm a little concerned about that. I'm a little concerned about, um, how property will be zoned or rezoned. And I think it's very important that we hold strong on making sure the zoning reflects what the master plan is for this area. I realize that Vesper may come and sue us. I mean, I see that it's been done elsewhere with other companies and may use PA two thirty-three to just put this where they want to put it anyway. But as a community, I think if we hold strong and if we're prepared to have attorneys and fight this, we have a fight that we can win. So, and we're prepared to support you guys however we need to do this. So, you've got an army of us out here that will work for you and will work together. But I just want to kind of throw that out there and make that stand. And thank you for all your advice too and everything. And I've been learning a lot from, from you particularly. And, and again, Danielle, thanks for the cookies. Sorry I didn't have them. A lot of them.
They're still there. They're following you.
Oh, no, no. Nice, thank you.
Okay, Melissa, thank you. Um, anybody else? Yes, sir?
Let you, let you laugh.
I just don't want to...
Not, not best, not best. Uh, first name Marshall, last name Collie. It's my wife, Erica. Spoke earlier. I, I would just think it would be the community's best interest that the master plan or any ordinance that's put in place really sends a message to either Vesper or any other energy company that they should look elsewhere. You have Magi, you have multiple camping sites between Holly Rec area. You have, um, County Park. You just invested a huge amount for an ORB park. The Renaissance Festival, uh, those grounds. You have Holdridge, which is another, uh, recreation area, you know, and all the things that come with it. Whether it's boating, hunting, fishing, whatever. Why would this community want to put, why would you want to risk any of that? Your, your, your best asset are your natural resources, which people that live here, people that live around here, or people that come here to visit as a destination, right? That's what they, that's what they want to do when they come here. They're not going to come here for VES or they're going to come here for, um, data center. And that was a theme of, of the meeting they spoke about. Those are the two things that they talked about. Person after person after person. Probably a little more on the data centers and maybe that's even a bigger risk. And then a few on the, the best systems that are, that are being proposed or being worked on right now. So, I would just think we should put everything forward to, you know, make it very difficult or make them choose elsewhere. Which I don't really want it anywhere in Michigan, wh- whether it's, you know, whether it's Groblin Township or Holly Township or anywhere. So, I don't, I don't think it's best for Michigan, especially whether waters are natural resource.
Thank you, Marshall. Appreciate your thoughts. Um, Carrie, would you like to go next or should we?
Is it all right? I'd love to.
If you would like to speak now at the time.
I would love to. I would love to first and foremost say ditto to what everybody said. I know Melissa was looking at me, but I'm in agreement. We need to work together, like you said, Jeff. I was surprised at last month's meeting and I said that, but I appreciate the accountability. I appreciate the transparency and not just myself. I think, and this is something I'm not shared, is that I didn't want to do this. And I have, I'm going to say the human side of it. Came last year to find out what this was all about. Attended every single meeting and every special meeting even before. I don't know if you guys that are now new on the board were here for those meetings last year. I started June third and came to every single one, fire hall here. And the more that I listened and the more that I dug, that by August of last year, I knew this would not be good. But now a year later, I shared this at the last meeting last week because we are trying to do it all of them. I've got a wealth of information that I love to share with you guys. This is last year's meetings that I attended, notes and information, people coming to me and introducing me to a lot of information that I would have never known. This is just since August. This was last year. This is just since August. I have a wealth of information as well as digging, some people call it a rabbit hole, that I've gone down. In addition to this, I have got petitions that have been signed. I gotta give that job to somebody else. I cannot watch three-hour-long meetings anymore. I need these clips. They help me to be better prepared. I've got notes and information from people who are very concerned. I've got other counties in different areas. The state of Michigan wants over two thousand megawatts. So, Vesper wants nine hundred of it. We're only three hundred of it, but it's larger than the two hundred and twenty that's being built down in Trenton right now by DTE. DTE, the state of Michigan approved DTE's proposal for renewable energy, green energy. It is that. They did not approve consumers. I have the article. I can show you the ways that, if you look in Luddington, they're doing a very super green energy using the water from, they've been doing it since the seventies. Using their, you know about it in Luddington, yeah. And what they do is in the non-peak hours when, when the... when, when the, uh, power is not being used as much, they're pulling it up and storing it. And in the high peak, they let the gravity do the work, and it goes through the hydro, hydro, oh my gosh. I know it, but I don't wanna misspeak. It's a hydro, but I have it. So ultimately, that's brilliant. We're using the resources we have. That's true green energy. So I have a lot here. I'm in agreement. Our master plan as is. I'm gonna be there in January. And you, you will, will do well, you will do well to have a large facility, because I know that there are several that are planning their calendars in advance. I do have one person who's asked me to speak on her, on her behalf tonight. She texted me something because she's ill and could not be here. But it's basically wordy, and you guys are right. So if you're not ready tonight per se to put together a YOR or Creo, and with all of what I know, and I'm only scratching the surface, honestly, I'm only scratching the surface. I really would highly recommend to this board, because you're doing your due diligence, every one of you, to put the best stringent in place that you can for yourselves and for this community, and partner with your neighboring communities. You partner over, um, what's it called? Renaissance Festival with Holly. I mean, you both own the property, so you partner and you work together. I'd do the same, especially with Springfield. I just think that some of those leaders don't even have a clue what half of this is even about. But thank you guys again. I do sincerely wanna say thank you. And I am here, just use me as a wealth of information. I'm happy to give you as much as you would like. And not force you to go in any direction, but just to educate you.
Okay, thank you, Carrie. We always appreciate your, your fervor, your, your, um, your always advocacy. We appreciate that.
Well, we're gonna move on, Michigan, otherwise. So it was either this or that.
Is there any other, I think, ma'am, you're the only one who has not spoken at this point, I believe. It's Chris. No, you're good. Or you, ma'am?
I spoke on a turn earlier, so.
All right, well, thank you again, everyone, for coming. We appreciate your comments. You know, your thoughts, your inputs been noted. And as we move the process forward, you know, starting tonight, really, we look forward to, you know, the, the sharing of ideas and concerns that matters, so. So back to the agenda, if I can move to item ten, which is the new business. As the agenda shows, it's just a discussion regarding the text amendment to amend the zoning ordinance only. This is not a discussion regarding, um, the updating of the master plan at large, correct?
Um, actually, it is a little bit about master plan. So one of the things that we had talked about at length is, do we, for the master plan in January, we're proposing to do a public engagement event. One of the topics we wanted to get public input on is the controversial land use issues. And so what my cover letter is really going to is making sure we're getting constructive feedback, to make sure that we're asking questions we want answers to, but also making sure that this is input we're seeking to help us make better legislative decisions. That's, those are the two goals of, I guess, what I'm looking for, um, for tonight's meeting. So some of the uses, um, so you have battery energy storage facilities, I have commercial solar energy facilities, I have commercial wind energy facilities, and data centers. These are more or less the alternative energy you mentioned, but data centers has been something that's really popping up on people's radars. And so I said, well, if we're gonna talk about these, we might as well mention that as well. Um, and so the question is, is do we still wanna ask questions of all four? So we can. Um, the only use that I would consider removing is probably your commercial wind energy. You are not a conducive candidate for that land use. Now, if you wanna make regulation for it, no problem. Uh, we can make it somewhat general enough that it would work, but you just, you are not a prime candidate for that remotely. And so I don't know that we wanna waste township resources to develop an ordinance for use that is never going to happen, as opposed to we just hope doesn't happen. And typically, with wind energy projects, you know they're coming two years in advance. So if somebody were to approach us, we would have, generally speaking, sufficient time to research it and then create an ordinance in which we're then addressing it. That would, that would generally be my tack, but I will do as directed.
What if it's just one line that says no?
So, um, what I've done in some master plans, um, is that we talk about the level of appropriateness of certain uses. And so that's something we could add a paragraph and say, "Commercial solar or wind energy is not conducive." Now, does that give us a firm no? No. But it gives us a document that we can point to. And we can have even, um, developers say, "So in our master plan, we did a survey. We had fifty people at this meeting, and you had fifty pers, all fifty said X." And then have them evaluate what choices they wanna make. Um, so that's, that's, I think, the positive component to it. Does that mean a no? Not policy-wise, but it helps us give something that we can point to. Developers, if they do approach the township, say, "Well, based on fact, this is how we feel about this. And this is why we think it's appropriate or not appropriate." Not that it gives us the power to say no, but at least we can point to it, and maybe developers find on their own, and then they don't approach us.
So just for the sake of minutes, um, this right here is kinda what, not everything, obviously, that's going to be discussed at the, at the community meeting.
Correct.
But these are gonna be specific subjects that we are gonna talk about.
Yep, so I already have the other two portions of the meeting already more or less figured out, which is more master plan related. Um, we already talked about doing the corridors and re-envisioning those, or envisioning those in the way we want to vision them, maybe is a better way to put it. Um, but because we knew that the alternative energy discussion is something that we really said we want more public opinion on, I wanted to bring it up again to us, say, what information from a public standpoint would make you better make decisions on what's appropriate or not appropriate? So I guess the first part of those four, or my first question still is, do we wanna do a question on all four of those? Not to say that we have to do a text man on all four, but we can at least have opinions on all four of those uses.
I think it boils down to community input, so the answer's yes. We would want community input on all four of those.
If we're pulling everybody together, let's do it.
Yeah, absolutely.
All right, so I'll do all four. So then I have a series of questions. Um, so the first one's talking about level support. And we would have the fill-in-the-blank, strongly support, support, neutral, oppose, strongly oppose. So everyone can kind of put in their feeler for all of those uses. The next one is the level of support they have for those being in the various districts. So below, um, again, we wanna make sure that when we ask the public's opinion, not being disingenuine. So I guess if there's zoning districts that we're like, oh, absolutely not, we're never putting it there, then we shouldn't say, would we want it here? And so I listed most of the zoning districts, some of them I did not. Um, so we have the rural estates farm, single-family residential, recreation, flex corridor IT, flex corridor GHC, commercial corridor, light industrial, general industrial, and extraction. Extraction's a different word for the gravel mining zoning district you have. But it does list other uses, so that's just a clarity point. And so when we look at those four uses, um, are there any districts that we say, "Oh, we don't want that to be shown on the feeling scale for the public"?
Does it matter, though?
So you can bring up all of them, that's totally fine, and we'll take the results of that and summarize it. But if there's some you know, the answer's no, then I shouldn't list them.
Yeah, I get it, but, but then also too, you have the added twist on, all right, I'm gonna take solar, for example. The private use, residential use. So I almost see this as too.
But these are just commercial that we're talking about.
Yep, I'm not asking.
The master plan and, okay.
Cause the private-public one, um, whenever you're doing it as an accessory, a true accessory for your purpose, generally speaking, I think you should allow it everywhere, cause if it's for your single-family home or if it's for your commercial building, it's not at a scale that's, again, it's the accessory part. Yep, and, and so that's usually when people say, "I don't have a big problem." And then you just make regulation where it's like, "I don't wanna see it." Great, we'll put a green bill, and that's the requirement. So I don't think the private is as concerning as much as the commercial grade is.
So basically, what do you wanna say, and where do you wanna say it? Where, what do you wanna say about the ordinance, and where do you wanna put, what zoning do you wanna put this allowed in?
So the difference, for what I would write our definition, I wouldn't do the wattage. The state has their wattage requirement. It's purely an accessory dominant or not dominant. So if it is private, and it's accessory, you already have a use there, and the energy's going specifically for that, that's private.
What if you're selling the energy back to the utility?
Then that's commercial grade.
So even if you have a personal solar panel, and the access you're willing to.
Because you can do that.
No, no, they, they throttle you. Um, they do on the, the private side, yeah. So again, it goes back to what's the purpose. The purpose is to provide energy for your single-family home. If you do a little bit beyond that, they regulate you. You are not making much money off of it. They will not let you upsize it.
So that's, that's.
So it's a very minimalistic issue, um, I would say. You're, and the reason we're doing that is the definition of commercial or not, is because if they're big enough, they can go through this state process fine. But if they're a megawatt below, whatever it needs to be, now you have to follow our local ordinance.
I see.
That's the point.
Okay.
And so, um, I don't want there to be a gap in regulation. So if you wanna do the state process, fine. You have that prerogative if you are that big.
So our ordinance is gonna cover everything right up to the two, three, three ordinance for?
Well, we'll go beyond it still. It'll still be a workable compatibility ordinance for the commercial grade. But I don't want it to be the definition of wattage that's only mentioned in the state. Cause if the purpose is that you're providing it as an accessory, that's a different approach in size. Once you go commercial grade, well, now I have it, cause I can't forecast what happens in thirty. Maybe technology gets amazing, and so then they can do these more profitably at a lower scale. And I don't want there to be that gap.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
I don't know. I just don't know. And so I'd rather just include, what's the use? Are you supplying it for your onsite needs, or are you off-grid intentionally? They know that when they're walking in for that business plan.
So you asked a question, you says, uh, should, what other districts should we be including in that? I think the only thing that you've excluded from the list is, uh, many, uh, multiple family, uh, mobile home residential. I think that's it.
Yep, those are the two that this would.
That's, I mean, the rest of the districts that, I mean, are included in there, whether, you know, or not they're applicable. I mean, it's just, that's for gaining public comment. I mean, I'm sure we're not gonna put a, I, I'm sure there's gonna be public opinion that, you know, battery storage is not gonna happen in a single-family residential, you know, what could wind or, I don't know. If the property's large enough, right? That's another thing. So that's the only one that I see on the, the single-family resident one. It's the only one on this whole list of things that you identified that I would be hesitant to even list. The only because, I think, what is our set, single-family residential size usually? Is it ten acres, or does it go up to larger acres, larger tracks?
Single family are small.
They're usually smaller.
Like an acre.
You like an acre, well, two and a half acres, or yeah.
And the two and a half acres is all rural estate.
So it wouldn't, it wouldn't yet apply to situation, because setbacks would be kind of, you know, unreasonable in those situations of smaller persons.
Other than they stitch properties together.
Oh, they can stitch them together?
Correct. So you have, um, participating parcel lines versus non-participating property lines. And in the state act, they merge those things. And so you can have properties that span property lines as a project area. That's why all the setbacks are from inhabited structures. They don't care about property lines. So that's why we're being very careful.
But, but wouldn't it be up to a given township to go through and put allowances in, or what is not allowed? So let's just say that, okay, for single-family, um, zone areas, I'll, I'll just make something up, battery storage is not allowed, right? However, and it's only allowed in, and, and again, I'm making stuff up as, as an example. Um, but it would be allowed in industry, some industrial zone areas or something. Wouldn't that be up to the township and, uh, and the ordinance and what goes into each one for us to determine? So then you didn't, wouldn't have to worry about the stitching together. It's, no, you just can't put one in over there. You gotta, you gotta look for land that's zone, or if you buy up that land, you have to petition or ask for approval to have it rezoned and go through that process.
So I kept single-family residential in there, cause I didn't know if you wanted to consider commercial solar. Some communities say, eh, that, that, that's a low intense use. As long as you don't see it, you don't hear it, it can be in a single-family smaller district. Other communities, the answer's no. So.
The stitching together is, is what concerns me on, on that. And, and usually in an ordinance, by, by, the ordinance outlines the permitted uses and permitted uses by special use. It really doesn't ever say, no, you can't do this. It doesn't specify.
Correct, if it's not listed, it's permitted.
It's not listed, it's not permitted use. So you wouldn't have to worry about saying no battery storage in single-family.
It just wouldn't be considerable.
It just wouldn't, it wouldn't be what the allowable use.
And that's the point I was trying to make. So, and that's why I would say that I wouldn't even wanna bring a single-family in the conversation, because to me, you're in your twen, commercial and, and.
But the thing, to her point is, stitching together properties, and property, people, you can get a series of single-family uses, uh, properties stitched together to, to allow the use in there, so.
No, how? When it's not spelled out as an allowable use, how can that be unless they rezone or apply to be rezoned?
That, they would have to rezone, wouldn't they?
Right.
They could stitch single-family residents together, or is, single-family properties together to put a, uh, uh, wind tower on it.
So they have, uh, so they do have non-participating and participating property lines, where you can put in a wind facility that spans multiple properties.
But if it's not a permitted use.
But if it's zoned in an area that's not an allowable.
Correct, so that's why I'm asking, are we putting it as an option to be permitted or a special land use? Or is it out of the discussion?
I think it's out.
I think it's out.
Okay, that, that's what I wanna check. Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't know what all the other board members think, but.
So if you leave those words blank, it's not permitted, right?
Well, we're, we're talking about this matrix that for public discussion, is whether we wanna list single-family residents as, as a permitted or special land use within a single-family residential district. And the, my opinion is, is that I don't think we even give that option out there, because it's, it's not a, it's not a permitted use. So I would just leave it off.
And I'd say, everything else is up for discussion, uh, in the, in the meeting that we have in January.
Right.
Yep, but we wanna take off the nevers. So we already know we're never putting it there. And that's part of the intro to the discussion, um, is these are never being considered as appropriate. So, and there any other ones that we see are a never? Now, I can divide this table out. So like data centers, for example, um, those could be only industrial appropriate, if you wanted me to do it that way.
I, I think there's, I think there needs to be, at the planning workshop, there needs to be a level of, of understanding of where these uses have historically been permitted in other communities. You know, it's kinda hard for a layperson to understand that, or no.
I think if you.
There's cringe it over there.
Well, I, I think what you can do is you can explain what the use is, and you can provide a picture, and you can say, where do you think this makes sense?
Right.
I think most people, when you imagine a data center, which is a bunch of outbuildings and a parking lot, you go, yeah, we don't need to have random sprawl in my rural area. That can be something that's put in industrial or commercial.
My point is, is that, I'll take the flex corridors that I'm not familiar with. I'm familiar with recreation, single-family, rural farm. You know, these are all things I'm familiar with. But when I looked at flex corridor, what's that? I got into reading the intent. It's a commercial area. It's a commercial district that allows, you know, flexible commercial activities. Oh, I'm like, oh, okay, I'm used to business one, two, three, you know. Okay, it's kinda similar, but I, I haven't looked at it to see what that is. First, to get public comment on where these uses are going, should be placed. There's gotta be a general understanding what that zoning district is. And if you, if you're in a workshop and you're working on something, you know, you're getting asked this question of, where do I want a battery energy storage facility? Do I want it on a flex corridor? What the hell's a flex corridor? I'm sorry, what the heck is a flex corridor? You know, uh, you know, I would be like going, I don't know, special land use or, sure, per, permitted. You know, for all I know, could be permitted in that.
Yep, and, and that's something that will show where that current zoning map is. What I, I do anticipate us doing as part of our future land use discussion, we haven't gotten there, um, is a simplification of our current zoning ordinance. Um, I think that right now, it's a very complicated ordinance for what it really needs to be. So I don't think you need, um, three commercial zoning districts. I think you could probably hang out with one or two and be completely happy with those results. Um, and so.
Well, we'll have the map there, right?
Correct, yep. Correct, yeah, so that's.
That shows where.
Shows generally where it is, and based on our preliminary.
As important as what it is, it's where it is.
Yeah, and part of our discussion, I think, so far on the corridors have been that we don't want Grinch Hall Road, the entire thing to turn commercial. That's what your current plan more or less is forecasting. And that's not actually accurate to where you want this vision to go, and so that's an anticipated change on your current master plan. Is we're not having the whole corridor be upzoned to be commercial, there are specific segments we'd like to see. Transition, um, still local.
Well, and I, and I almost think there's two, maybe you've already incorporated it in. In terms of what to be discussed, um, in the January meeting, but. I see. The other side of this related to the master plan, uh, okay, here's how things are zoned today. Um. And I don't know if you wanna share what's in the master plan today in terms of what was in the vision. Um, but then based on everything that gets discussed in that meeting, it's almost like the last section of the meeting. Should be, okay, based on everything that's discussed. Community input on the vision of. The future zoning, based on what we, what we came up with, right, so for example. Areas that may today be considered agricultural. Getting community in- input, okay, based on everything that we talked about in this workshop. You know, it, does this area still make sense, or, and not doing it section by section, but just. Getting some general input of, okay, based on what we know now, are there, um. Is there feedback relating to future zoning needs that we need to incorporate in the master plan? Based on what we reviewed and what we decided, um. Like, for example, renewable energy, even where it's appropriate in terms of community feedback, in terms of what areas. For zoning purposes. Um, and then looking at those areas to say, okay, is that. Why don't you kinda get what I'm saying?
I get what you're going at, um, one of the things we haven't talked about at this level of our planning commission, we haven't really talked about the future land use map. Cause we're not quite there yet, um, typically, we do all this data collection, we do a public engagement event that kinda gives us some pointers in different direction. Then we draft the future land use section, uh, one of the optional items that the township board said to check back in on is to do an open house, which is when you more say. We have scenario one, two, three, which of these do you like better? Um, and so that's something that we, the township boards have come back in, we can see if we wanna do more public engagement, but. Uh, right now, what the plan is, is that we would do it along those corridors, that's really where we're expecting the commercial and industrial conversation. And so, in a way, yes, but right now, what I'm more focusing on is, um. What do people see now, and then where do they want to go, and focusing on that and keeping all the technical stuff to analysis later. Cause I think generally people know, I want commercial to go from here to here. And they can draw that on the map that I'm gonna provide for them, and we digest that, and then we say, okay, now we're gonna take the technical. Language, kinda put that in there, um, but they don't need the. Technical context to go, oh, well, in the future land use map, we're also gonna do these properties, do you agree with this philosophy, yes or no? Um, I think we can take a step back and say, here's the base level of information of what's currently there. Where would you be willing to see this grow, and then we digest that.
Okay, yeah, cause I almost see as, as part of the, part of the output, it is based on. Getting community feedback in terms of, and setting aside, almost like setting aside where. The zoning is today and how it's laid out, but from the pure aspect of. Um, where renewable public, or commercial renewable energy data centers fall. Industrial versus agricultural versus, um, the mining area. Um. And then based on that. Getting, almost lining that up with community input, and then looking at our master plan, because. I guess where I'm getting at is. Our master plan may change from a future zoning perspective, based on the feedback that we get from the community, where. Maybe we've got new lands zoned for, um. Industrial, but based on locations of. The industrial zone, we may want to revisit that and re, and for future use, maybe rezone a portion of that to. And I'm just making something up, agricultural, that way they're not tapped for renewable energy, and maybe it's a smaller slice, right? Based on community input, safety, things of those concerns, I guess that's where I'm almost seeing this filling into. How that future land use map is gonna look like in the end.
Yep, and, and that'll be part of our discussion, I don't know that, my intention wasn't to get into all of that at this public engagement event. Cause the intention is it to be a two hour event. And we have three or four major topics that we want to get through, so.
They have to have another one as a point.
Yep, and that's something the township board said, check back in, um, we'll see if we wanna do more public engagement, based on how the first one goes and how everyone's feeling. So I'm keeping that in the back of my mind as far as, um, pacing, um, and making sure I communicate frequently and often.
Yeah, okay.
So at the risk of backtracking here, Caitlin, can you lay out, and this is just kind of a general request. How is this pub, I've never personally been through one of these, maybe other, you know, fellow commissioners have. Um, but how does, how does this meeting go forward, is there an agenda that's prepared? If so, who prepares it, who, who, um, you know, kinda oversees the flow of the meeting, who guides the discussions, you know?
This is me, this is all me, um, and so, um. Yeah, yeah, this is the Caitlin Show, and we customize your public engagement to what you want, um, and so I already have a tentative, uh, plan. Um, as far as what exercises I think we want to go through, to make sure we emphasize these are community values. Um, we are maintaining those community values, um, also making sure we talk about the corridors, I think that's something that was amiss in your last plan. Based on when we talked about that transportation chapter, saying, do you wanna see sidewalks on Grinch Hall Road? Uh, no, um, and so that's something I wanna reevaluate in a different way, cause. When everyone was talking about that, they were like, well, the expert came in and said this, this, this. I don't want to be the expert that says you shall do these, um, it's meant to be a ground up attitude, um, and plans, and that's how they actually get implemented. And so, I wanna make sure that we're having some parameters for these exercises, but really letting the public. Show what they want, and so that's where I think the, when I say we're gonna look at the corridors and say, this is where the commercial is now. Where do you see it going, most people in their minds say, well, I'm cool with it going three up to whatever road, they can tell you that's generally what I'm looking for. Um, you can get other policy preferences, you don't wanna see a bunch of leapfrog development. If you have an entire corridor, get future land use for commercial, they can leapfrog the whole corridor, because it doesn't matter. Other plans I've written, I try to make sure it's very clear, you need to be adjacent to existing commercial, and we consider it appropriate if you still are on this corridor. That way you don't get the awkward leapfrogging when you don't wanna be urbanized. And so, that's the tack in the back of the room, um, but I think we can make a conversation to make sure it's approachable from the public, and then. One of the other sections is gonna be these general feelers on alternative energy to help us get that baseline, but this is my facilitation, I'll have another colleague of mine go through with this, we provide all the material. The intention is to break out into small groups, um, and that way people can work with a map with. Hopefully five or six individuals per table, you can get up to eight, but after eight, it gets a little bit too much. Um, has been my experience, and so, let people feel like they're taking a stake, and we walk around to the different tables to make sure, once the general direction is provided. They can still ask incremental, um, questions of me and my colleague.
And they rotate the table, you've planned on like rotating the, the workstations, tables, whatever you wanna call them.
Um, so I'm actually gonna have everyone do the exercises together.
Okay.
So I'll give general direction, it'll be included on the table, directions, some people like to hear them, some people like to read them, we'll have both. Um, and then everyone does the same thing for like the twenty minutes, and then I walk around and verify.
So this outline of this letter that you have right here, you have four bullet points with the rank of the priority concerns, having specific level of noise setback requirements, that's all.
Correct.
Part of the, the renew, or, uh, alternative energy discussion.
Right.
Uh, at that workshop, then you have the other components in that, that workshop too, that you would have within that two hour meeting.
Correct.
So. The, the questions that come up, you're gonna set it up, so like, you know, rank the priority concerns for each use. You'll probably have a list of general concerns that have already been expressed, cause I've heard lots of them, um, you know, and they, and, there'd be a ranking of, of, um. Of a group of people, a group of people around the table ranking of those things, and working through that, I've done them with workshops and rotated the tables too.
Right.
To whereas where, whatever's of an interest to, uh, a person, say, I, I wanna, I wanna, I'm concerned on the uses, I wanna rank those, and I wanna be over there, or. I'm not so concerned on, you know, this, and so having that rotated around, so I, I understand that the workshop, how you would do that and stuff, but. Um, and this is just for the, the, uh, alternative energy stuff that you have in your letter, right, yeah, so.
So, so the two facets of this, this public forum, um, corridors and renewable energy, right?
Yep, and then I'm gonna have a general one as well, just to remake sure everyone, one starts on a happy note, so like, what do you want in your community, what are valleys? Building that commonality, cause you do have a lot of that within your community.
I mean, we have the master plan last, uh, updated in twenty twenty one.
Correct.
Uh, corridors is within section four, resource inventory and analysis.
Yep.
Renewable energy is where?
You don't have it.
Not at all.
As far as I know.
Okay, um, but. Say for those two broad topics, the rest of the master plan will not be part of this public meeting.
Correct.
All right, that's helpful, and with regard to tonight's purpose, we're not talking about corridors, we're only focusing on. The renewable aspect of that.
Yep.
Now, as for the corridor component of the meeting, when, will, will we be privy to what you have in mind before that meeting?
I wasn't planning on it.
No?
Nope.
What will the commission's role be, if any?
I would love you to come to our event, um, you have been at a lot of our public meetings, um, some of you weren't at our. Initial ones where you talked about census data and things of that nature, um, but what really helps is that you also know how review processes work, and so I would. Likely have one of you at each table as a local knowledge person, and then hearing firsthand what people are concerned about. Um, it's one thing when you're at the diocese, and it's another thing when you're sitting at a table with. Somebody that's never gone to a public meeting before, and they're like, well, I'm really, I think that this should be where commercial is, well, we can't buy property as the township, and so you shall put a McDonald's here. That's not what we do, we, we generalize things, so.
Okay, Dan.
So if we're there, we're there as public, or we're there as a commissioner?
Both, but you can say whatever you want.
So there's no filter?
Correct. Correct, yep, you are not, you are not formally presenting anything, so again, i- it's not a public meeting, so there's a little bit less of that liability concern in the background, right? Um, and then you are put in groups, so the feedback is summarized in groups.
So it's part of the public, on your second bullet point for questions to ask for your survey.
Mm-hmm.
You, you have two optional answers, did we have a third? It's an N for never.
Yeah.
Don't you just leave it blank?
Well, we got a strongly approached.
Well, agreed in the same, you can serve with a P for a good permit, or an S I U for special, I'm just.
Oh, um, oh, I, I understand what you're getting at now, um.
That way you're getting true community input, I mean.
Yes, and, uh, and just realize that we may get some surveys back that say never for all of them, and that's fine, except, um. We'll talk about that afterwards.
Well, I know there is a fine line that local governments what must walk when it comes to prohibition and, and, you know.
So there's exclusionary use, um, exclusionary zoning, that, that's the technical term for it, where. If there's an appropriate, um, location and an adequate, and there's a need, you cannot not have it in your community.
Right.
So we just put two thousand foot setbacks on it, and cover it that way.
Um, so the nice thing about some legislation is you're only a push come to shove, um, you are only called out on it if somebody wants to. Sue you, right, so, um, that is some choice some communities make.
I think your com- comment about putting us in groups, not putting us two or three commissioners in the same group, being in different groups. Cause that's how we did it long ago when we had it at the Camp Hammer Act, I mean, it was so good that we were small groups, we could talk about it. And if one person was totally against what everybody else, okay, then we kept them to a side, and. We asked another group, so they could get their views out, to keep it together, but I think that's excellent.
Are we, as part of that process, are you gonna have any type of, uh, web based survey? Cause I know there are a lot of individuals that are not comfortable in group settings, that, um, want to provide feedback, but. You know, maybe feel like they're the minority and say that, you know, and, and really wanna put their opinions, are we planning and doing any type of? Uh, web based surveys for that type of thing?
Uh, no, that wasn't part of the plan, um, for the, um, open house, it's easier to do, cause then there's an actual questionnaire that goes with boards. So then hypothetically, they could bring those up, look at them, and still do the survey, but for the visioning meeting, um, there's more actual. You're doing stuff on maps and things of that nature, so I don't know that that would translate, other than. The only part that could translate is probably this portion of the discussion. And that's something that I think we could, um, work through with the township and discuss, um, to see if there's.
So would that, in your opinion, wouldn't that be appropriate, the view, a, a web based survey of some sort?
Correct, now you can do a full community survey, that's not something that the top, a township opted to do. Um, when we talked about the variety of public engagement options, they prefer to do an in-person meeting rather than a full survey.
I, I just know from a planning standpoint that there are members of the public that are, unlike me. Are afraid to voice their opinion about different things, and, uh, because they're in a group setting. And they'd rather do that more introvertedly than extrovertedly, so, um, you know, just, Danielle, if that's something you could talk. I, I would recommend consideration down the road, maybe not in this part of this process, but. Something that, that could help, allow that input to be given to the, the township in a planning sense. Uh, by someone who could fill that out, even people, extrovert people fill that stuff out too, so. You know, but it's helpful information, helpful data in, in, that I oversee through recreational planning that I've done. Through web based surveys to understand those trends, to understand what, what is out there currently, so, I just, that's, I'm throwing it out there.
Could, could I make a suggestion, I mean, is it, I've done. Brainstorming workshops in the automotive industry, but, um. To kinda capture your point in terms of different personalities, you got introverted versus extroverted, and everyone in between, but. What you could do. Sight map and, and, and looking at the zoning and all that, that, that's one thing, right, that needs to probably be done at a table with. Uh, a group of folks, you know, groups of eight or whatever, uh, to go through that, but getting to this table, and then whether you're. Uh, you know, depending on like your alternative energy, you know, whether it's. You want it to go there or not, or pass or, or, or whatnot, you could almost do a, um. Like a large sheet of paper with this table on it, and then you almost give people, um.
Voting stickers.
Little stickers, right, um, like red, yellow, and green stickers, to keep it simple, and, and the first task would be, go up and put a sticker. Here's what each sticker is defined, go up there and sticker away on this when it comes to alternative energy, um, and do that. So you could do that as one exercise, where you don't even need to be in breakout sessions, you could do that, and, and that could actually be a nice little icebreaker, since, you know. Whatever, go through and do that, you could even do after. You could even do, after you get done with that, you could do a second exercise where the guys that used to work for me used to laugh at me, because I'm a Post-it note freak. So what you could do is get a big sheet of paper, plaster it up there, give everyone a little stack of Post-it notes. And just say regarding, just talk through your thoughts around battery energy. You have on paper, you have battery energy, solar, data centers, and when, if we want to include it. And have people put their thoughts down on the Post-it note, like one thought for a Post-it note. And they can just go up there, they don't put their name on there, but they go up there and slap that on there. And then what you do as a group after the fact, what we would do is gather that up. And then we would take that and compile the information, because you'll probably see some commonalities where we can extract information out that way to either at the meeting or even one of our sessions. And have their discussion, um, just with thoughts.
So, so are we kind of blurring the line between form and substance here?
Nope, nope, I, I will take note of it. This is not my first shindig. And, but yes, I mean, sticky notes and like stickers and stuff like that, that, that's absolutely stuff that I have baked in that I'm not over elaborately telling you about. But yes, that, that is part of the plan, is to make sure there's some substance stuff. But then there's interactive stuff too, where people can just generally put their, their thoughts together. That is the intention to play a little bit to the people that are willing to sit in a group and talk to people. And having some spaces and opportunities for people that can just write down their private thoughts and still contribute. So yes, I'm aware of that.
So this isn't her first rodeo, she's done these before. And I'm going to tell you, she's going to put on a killer show for everybody. So I don't think we have to have questions.
That was kind of where I was going with this, like our purpose tonight is focused on substance, right? Because you, you want us to.
I want the end result of the feedback you get to be the stuff you were looking for, not me guessing. Some of this stuff, I have a better educated guess based on our other discussions. But this one, I wanted to make sure was more specific and I understood, we really want to know what districts people are talking about. Or if we really want to talk about the ranking of priority of each use and their concern associated with it. So we know that, for example, noise with data centers. If that is like top tier concern as opposed to setbacks, that's something that we can think through and a little bit easier to tell. I don't know that we want to put, do you agree with 65, 55, 50? That's too much for a technical discussion. But if we know the ranking of problems is noise, water quality concerns, if it then goes to fire safety, then it's setbacks. Well, okay, then we can know, generally speaking, these are the level of concerns.
Well, and to me, we need to understand that too, as we're going through and considering modifications or to the ordinance to go through and beef up on renewable energy and appropriate data centers. If something comes to the forefront, let's just say water quality, comes to the forefront for, let's say, battery energy storage. Okay, well, we know we have to make sure we beef up language and do our due diligence as we're doing requirements into the ordinance.
Yep, so I think that's where we can help. And I just want to verify those are some of the different concerns that, that's feedback you're looking for. So that seems like I'm more or less on par with those are concerns that we have. Because there's, for all those four uses, usually have noise, aesthetics, water quality or quantity, and then adequate public safety plans for fire and pollution. Is there any other major concerns? Like, as I mentioned earlier, there's setbacks, that's part of that. Is there any other concern that you wanted to say, hey, this is another one that somebody might rank?
Clean, cleanup or decommissioning or?
Air quality, yeah, one.
Okay.
Would you want environmental impact would be another? Basically ecosystem, environmental.
What did you say, Dan?
That was the cleanup, decommissioning.
Decommissioning.
I want to get rid of the junk.
And I'll probably use not the word decommissioning, or I'll use it slash removal of equipment, just so then people don't get caught, or aren't as familiar with the jargon that they'll understand. So decommissioning slash removal after end of use.
I think that was it. I think you caught a little bit of the rest of it. Yeah, because you, you've got on here adequate public safety, fire and pollution, but that's for overall.
Yep, and I'll break that out a little bit more. So again, we have 10 or so different qualities is the intention. And then I don't know that I, I said we could list out specific support of noise or different setbacks. But I, I generally discourage that, because then it becomes a very technical conversation. An understanding of very specific jargon as opposed to priority of these different uses.
Just a, I think, Danielle, did you say risk and security kind of what your idea was? Is a concern and something that needs to be listed, or no?
Yeah, I mentioned air quality.
The cleanup, oh, cleanup, cleanup.
Environmental impact, you know, the, all the things that kind of get related to containment if there's an issue or if there's ongoing concerns.
I just throw off the idea of the risk and security too, because, you know, data centers, I was doing a little research on that. You know, those are, become targets, so you got risk and security with that too. You know, the other thing is aesthetics. I think, I think, you know, from, from these things, for whether it's a high wind turbine or a large, huge building in the middle of nowhere, or a big solar farm, there's an aesthetic thing there too. So I think that there's something there that we probably want to match in there somehow.
Um, so I guess with that, I think that gives, is there any other major concept or something that you want to ask the public about alternative energy? Okay, so then it sounds like, other than removing single family residential, we're otherwise open to having members of the public pull out those different land uses? Or zoning district there's a, could be allowed in, quote unquote.
Yeah, we're just getting the single family out of there.
So just to reiterate, this is where you are going to allow, where we're going to allow commercial? This is the zoning for this? Like, what, what is this chart for? I don't understand.
Um, so the intention is, is to say, somebody could go and say, battery energy storage facilities are appropriate in light industrial, general industrial, and everywhere else I want it to be never.
Gotcha.
And then you go to commercial solar energy. Well, that makes sense, maybe in rural estates. And that's the only place I think it's appropriate. And then they NA everything else. So they, this is trying to give a policy preference on which districts. The other way we can approach.
But only for commercial?
Correct, I'm not doing private.
Okay.
And so, because the other option would be is that we just generalize it and say, ag, recreational, commercial, and industrial. I mean, we could make it that basic, because we do, I would encourage you later on in the process to simplify the code.
Yeah.
Um, so, but I think the zoning map helps you articulate, these are the areas we're talking about. And it is more area than what I think we're going to change. I think we're actually going to downsize the commercial area.
But for right now, being at this reflects the current.
Correct. It gives us something tangibly people can look at, understand. And then if they have follow-up meetings, they can recognize that was the map. Anything that changes the master plan, unless it's officially rezoned, it does not change. So if we change the master plan to say it's going to be commercial, or industrial, or ag, or whatever, it doesn't actually hit until you do an official rezoning or a new zoning map.
So you had some wording in there, stitching and leapfrogging? What were you, what, what, what does that mean? I don't know what those words mean.
I think it's easier, it's easier to explain when we get to the future land use discussion.
Okay.
Um, so I really want to park that, it's not going to be directly relevant to our public engagement event.
Okay.
Um, but I guess one of those things, and we'll talk.
Just for special land use? Is that what you said? Is that what you said? You said wait for the special land use session?
The future land use.
Future land use.
Yep, future land use discussion. The stitching comment that I made, that's more towards our text amendment itself.
Okay.
But the state statute does allow for participating properties. And so you can put project properties together ignoring property lines. That's why the language says inhabited buildings, is because I don't care about property lines. I just want to make sure it's far enough away from a non-participating inhabited building. That's why it's worded that way, to be even more generous.
Caitlin, before, earlier tonight, you had used the term open house.
Yes.
And we've used forum, we've used public engagement workshop. Workshop, we're all talking, I don't want to get lost in, you know.
Semantics.
Kind of semantics here, we're all talking about the same event, correct?
So an open house is different than our workshop or planning.
Okay, I'm glad I asked, because what is the open house?
Um, so an open house is a different form of public engagement. The intention is to be like an open house, so you can walk in and hang out with me for five minutes, or you can hang out with us for two hours, whatever's your, your pleasure. But the idea is that you have boards or concepts that you specifically have, part of its education explaining something, and then you're asking for additional feedback on those very specific things. The workshop we're planning is meant to be more engaging. It's sticky notes, it's, it is stickers and trying to have people draw things on map, because open houses are meant to be more simplistic, here's my answer for very specific things.
So is there an open house that too?
No, but the township board told me, um, that.
I'm a very linear thinker, right? Sequencho.
But that would happen at, so if we were to do a master, or an open house, it would be after our future land use discussion.
Okay.
So in our January public event, then we would have a meeting in February. And at that point, that's when we would say, do we want more public feedback on X, Y, Zs? And then we would go to the township board and say, would you be willing to do an open house? We could do another community survey. That's the next check-in point to see, do, how firmly confident do we feel in the policy we're proposing? Do we need more public input or not? Or public education or buy-in? That's really part of it too, is you're not just trying to have it be an up-down type situation.
So right now, it's just the workshop that's planned, right?
That's right.
Community workshop. No other words are allowed to be used right now. We're only saying workshop.
What's the community being?
Only called workshop.
Under a, a community meeting?
Um, so I didn't get the memo yet that we're calling it a workshop only, but yes, I, I change those words. Um, but yes, I'm talking about the same thing, yes.
But it, it's simple, it's small, but it matters, right? So we're all on the same page.
Yep, so there is no official meeting, there is no minutes, there is no diocese during our public workshop.
And for the benefit of the learned people in the room tonight, what is the date again? We have a date?
We haven't had a date yet.
We have an exact date, tentatively January 26th, right?
That's right.
I don't remember that being put in my schedule.
Again, glad I asked, right?
Um, I think we figured out a general week or two, but I don't know that we talked to the facility venue.
Were we going with Tamarack?
I believe we were going with Tamarack.
Okay.
Or it was the ski lodge, I don't remember.
We need Tamarack, it's bigger.
Oh, okay.
Well, in January, the ski lodge would be.
Open. But then we could have maybe more participants.
Yeah. Grab those people off the slopes.
So sometime the week of the 26th of January?
If you've already talked to Tamarack, that's fine, I just didn't recall.
No, I thought we said that in one of the meetings, that it was tentatively January 26th. I thought that I put that in.
I tend to agree. From memory, I thought we had a specific date.
Oh, okay.
January 26th. A week of January 26th.
Oh, you know what, now that we talk more about it, maybe I do vaguely remember that, okay.
And January 26th is a Monday.
Right.
So Caitlin, I guess another question, how will this?
Be advertised?
New workshop be advertised?
Um, so after the holidays, we will provide a flyer. We do encourage that to be posted all over. We hope that that would be pushed through social media and things of that nature. It's primarily with the partnership of the township and the connections they're in, but that is the point.
In the citizen?
Um, in the newspaper, we encourage it. So I do have a little write-out that they could put in, but that's a township choice.
Okay, thank you.
That's how it was advertised last time.
Oh, okay.
I'm sure it'll be in the paper, online, on Facebook.
A lot of us don't get the citizen.
Yeah, I never even knew the citizen existed.
And then it's a bright writer who would have proposed, it'd be good if it went to Tri-County as well. David Fleet just copied this thing and, and put it in the Tri-County as well, he could do it again.
I do put my stuff in Tri-County. When there's a public hearing, it goes to Kate at Tri-County and Allison from Citizen.
Okay, great. So Caitlin, does, does the discussion to this point, does that suffice for your purposes for the, for the workshop?
Yep.
Is there any other input that's needed for your benefit from us?
I have a question.
Daniel?
If this community workshop does happen on January 26th, would it be like from 6:00 to 8:00, or?
Um, so we can start it at 6:00, or it can start at 7:00, or it can start at 5:00.
Yeah, but that's what I'm asking, what?
Sure, I don't know, did we have a time?
No. Um, and, I mean, we pick 7:00 because then everybody's home from work. Usually everybody's home from work and after-school activities and whatever that is, it gets more people, I think, there.
Can I ask for a backup in case we have a snowstorm?
Yes, we will have two different dates scheduled. I will call Scott after this meeting.
Just please make sure it's not happening the week before. I'm going to be in New Jersey, all that, that.
I will try. My best.
Yeah, and then I believe we were planning on having the real date and snow date on the flyer. So that way everyone knew, in case of blizzard, we would make that call. And then just say, watch the township website, and we'll alert you as soon as that call is made that we're not doing it this date. Instead, we're doing the snow date.
Yeah, watch the, watch the website, watch Facebook, watch the sign. Because obviously, if it's going to change that quickly from one day to the next because of snow, you'll have to definitely pay attention. Pay attention.
What's the capacity of venue?
I will, I will talk to Scott. There's a ton of venues over there. We can fit a lot of people in a lot of places.
Where's that?
Tamarack.
And I don't know that we specifically did a tentative RSVP, but I think that's something that we're generally going to ask, is just to, even on social media, just so we know how much material I need to prepare and how many tables to set out. So if we're planning for a really good turnout, is at least 35 people for our workshop?
More than.
And, and at least my different jurisdictions, sometimes that's what you can muster, that's great. I've worked in other workshops where you have 60, 70 people. And that's, that's an even better turnout. But if you know that ahead of time, then I know I need 10 groups ready to go. And if we don't use it all, that's fine, but nothing's worse than being under-prepared. So I usually plan for two extra tables that I don't plan on. But that's something that, since we did have such an interest in the topic, that is something we're gearing up for, is to make sure there's adequate space for that.
Okay. And, and I guess just to kind of double back on something Mike had pointed out earlier, for the sake of semantics and making sure everyone's on the same page, you know, I think of just a key or some type of level set when it comes to definitional concepts at this meeting. Will there be, you know, some general definition of battery energy storage?
Yep, so.
So folks know this, and what, what, what does commercial solar energy entail?
Yep.
So they can make an enlightened, you know, apply an enlightened thought process to where we're going to be zoning or permitting these types of, you know, activities to be zoned.
Yep, for each, each exercise, there's going to be a mini explanation of that. But then not only me explaining it, but it's also in writing at the table.
Okay, good.
Just so then, again, some people, they have to read it. Other times, you, somebody misses the, the first part of the meeting and they're walking in. Sometimes you sit unfortunately next to the person that talked the whole time, and so you missed out on the direction. So we're doing both, plus me and another colleague will be there. So there's two of us walking around knowing what to facilitate.
And same question with what Mike's concerned earlier, there will be some definitional level set with the zoning categories?
Yep, I think I'm going to more focus on where they are as opposed to what they are. Because I think, then you get into the semantics of setbacks, and I don't know that the average person.
Can I clarify? I'm just talking the intent of that zoning.
The intent, yeah.
What the intent of that ordinance was, I'm not getting into the semantics of it. Just, you know, I think that's important for the public to know what the intent of that flex corridor is. What the intent of that ordinance was, I'm not getting into the semantics of it, just, you know, I think that's important for the public to know what the intent of that flex corridor is, or whatever it is. I think that that's, just so that they know what, you know, when they're looking at that, they can say, oh, that does match that intent, or it doesn't match that intent, that's all.
Yeah, just a high-level definition of zoning without having to get into the technical aspect, so in layman's terms. I, I think that would be of value for the general public, um, to, to spell that out.
I think there's consensus on that point.
Sure.
Okay, so Tamarack has a dining hall that can hold up thirteen hundred people. It has got, um, a lounge that can hold up to about a hundred, Butzel's, the center over there, can only do about ninety. So we have our options, it's in January, there's no kids there, I'm pretty sure. Something will be open.
Wonderful, thank you, Danielle.
Yep.
All right, um, any other questions for us to answer from you Caitlin, any other comments for Caitlin, or generally from the commission on item? Is it item? Item ten? If not?
They just throw that back out there, just look and consider the web, the web-based surveys and stuff, that's all.
Okay. And I guess we'll move then on to item thirteen A.
Well, there's none on old business. And then you have fourteen still.
Yeah, so we'll move to, uh, item thirteen A, which would be the December agenda items, if any, for next month's meeting.
I'm really hoping there's nothing. Really, really hoping there's nothing. I have to prepare, I have to prepare the mining permits, and the mining ordinance has gotta get finished, and they have to approve it, do we approve that at the township board yet?
Uh, I don't believe it's been at the township board though.
Okay. The township board has to approve the mining, and I have to get that ready in, to go in January, so, big project for me, but not to be putting this-
So there possibly, quite possibly could not be a meeting in December.
If there is nothing on the agenda, there will not be a meeting.
We don't anticipate a project coming through.
Okay, any, um, proposed items for December's agenda from my fellow commissioners? Okay.
Okay, no December meeting.
Onto item thirteen B then, would be the agenda items in January, of which there appear to be two, we have elections within the commission for chair, vice chair, and secretary. Discussion on those, or just notification general?
Just to note, that's when we have to re, Janelle has to re-square everybody in, we have to re-elect.
Okay. And then B two, the master plan community meeting.
Workshop.
Workshop.
Sorry, I didn't know I was gonna say, no words for workshop.
This meeting will be about a week before that, so it'll be like a last-minute-
Um, so I don't plan on discussing anything for the master plan in January, 'cause we really want the public engagement part first, then what the feedback is from that, is then it steers me on what I should recommend edits to our goals and objectives section, and our future land use discussion, so I'm waiting to get that input before I then present that recommendations, 'cause we want that public input before we craft the plan.
So what would I, what would I have to be then?
So you're saying like there won't be that item?
So we would not talk about the master plan other than, everyone please come to our workshop? And then we'd have the workshop.
I mean, if you guys have questions about it.
It will not have happened yet, so it would just be a, right?
The only, the only thing that I, I throw off there, Dan, is just, you know, understanding what the format is happening for the workshop.
I like to surprise you when you're there, so then you're going to be just like the attendee though.
I don't like surprises.
You guys get to be just as enthralled as the rest of the attendees, no special treat.
Just know that this is not part, it's, the planning commission is involved, but this is by far nothing that is on you guys one hundred percent as a planning commission. This is something to get our planner acclimated on what our community wants, so she can better help us write our master plan.
Just let her do her job.
Yes, just let her do her job, damn it!
Um, and I, I want you to be able to organically experience it, um, and, and get that feedback.
You won't be put on the spot.
I'm not expecting you to facilitate even your table, if you don't want to, um-
So our involvement as a commission really adds tonight. There?
Yep, I see.
So there's nothing to talk about on that right now?
Nope. I won't, I won't tell you more than what I've already told you.
We can cross that off.
No last-minute warnings, or suggestions, or don't do this.
Tip of the cap to you, Caitlin, I'm-
Nope, I take it.
So if we say a motion to just carry over item one, we could get out of January's meeting?
So you could, you don't have to have elections in January.
It's the elections.
It's the election.
No, no, but you don't have to have them in January.
Janelle's gonna want them in January.
Well, you also have to approve your meeting schedule for twenty-twenty-six.
I don't think they're gonna believe it the way it is.
You can-
And we have to do an annual report for twenty-twenty-five.
You're gonna mess us by January, Dan, so.
Well, I, and I gotta, I gotta throw a right to the works regarding the January meeting, because typically we do third Monday of every month, and that's-
The nineteenth.
And I'm actually, I'm, I'm in New Jersey that week on business, and I can't get out of that, so it either has to be the, the Monday before, or we're making it February.
I mean, as long as we have a core of my-
Come on, we don't change anything.
Does everyone know who's, what position?
Don't vote me in.
So you have, who, so we already know who our chair is? Does everyone know who the co-chair, or the vice chair is?
Angela.
I'm the vice chair.
Okay, and then the S. Secretary is?
David Newbill.
So.
You can keep your head in, you can throw your head out.
It's early today.
I mean, I'm fine.
Let's, let's ruminate until January.
Very good.
Excellent. Okay, um, I guess public comments to kind of wrap things up for this evening, is there anyone, I mean, that's item fourteen, correct? So just, again, for you folks, do, do you have kind of a good understanding, at least conceptually, about what will be happening at the workshop on January twenty-sixth?
I'm looking forward to the January twenty-sixth workshop. I'm also looking forward to finding out whether or not Vesper or whatever, city names to state.
And, and to make it a worthwhile endeavor, again, this is my first time going through this, listening to Lynn, it sounds like when they did this in twenty-one, it was really productive, good turnout, so, you know, send a, send a call-off to the masses, Carrie, make sure everyone knows about this, so they show up and voice, you know, their thoughts on it.
How many people do you think we showed up in twenty-twenty-one, Lynn?
It wasn't twenty-twenty-one, but it was a lot earlier. I would say well over fifty.
Was it Genetown?
Okay.
It was at Tampa, Tamarack, and again, it worked very, very well.
I'm gonna say it's gonna be more than fifty.
I think it's gonna be more than fifty-two.
I think-
We think having issues then.
Happy to have that.
The bad, the, you know, the bad sign up on-
It's one of those lights, then.
Yes, Marshall?
Yes. I think maybe you touched on it, but I just wanted to maybe clarify, you talked about, like, im- impact of like a bas or a data center. Um, and I think a big concern is if there is a catastrophe to one of those facilities, right? Some people just don't want it, because they just don't want it, right? But it's the catastrophe that's gonna ruin Groveland and the area of communities, it's gonna ruin the water, it's gonna ruin the land that it's on. That's probably, at least to me, the biggest concern, is when something does happen. Whether it happens to this one, or the one in Kalamazoo area, it will happen to one of them, it's just, who's it gonna happen to, right? We've already seen other communities impacted, um, either in the United States, or, you know, you know, further than that, but I guess if you could capture that portion of it, I, I don't know how you do that exactly, but I think we have some pretty smart people that can do that.
Well, to Caitlin's credit, and to your point, she's already listed, adequate public safety plan for fire and pollution is one of the high concerns going into the-
One of the, not being technical and using very simplistic language, it would be disaster planning. That, that, that's gonna be its own line item to say disaster planning, is that the concern? Yeah, so, so that way, using basic language, it's not the technical language, but, um, making sure people were receptive to understanding these concerns and wanna address them, so the intention is to have ten different micro parts, now, some of those might be weave and woven into common concerns, but I still wanna itemize them out separately and break, overly break them out, so people feel like they can provide constructive feedback.
Sure. Okay, very good, thank you. Melissa?
Melissa, yeah, thank you, I just wanted to second, um, Commissioner Donald, your idea of doing a, like a survey monkey, or some sort of web survey, I think that would be really, really helpful for this community, so that, along with the flyer, for people who maybe can't be there, or just as like more information for you, um, I don't think it would be very expensive to do, and it should be pretty simple. Um, I think people would appreciate it, 'cause there are a lot of people that don't get out, they can't get out, there are, there's a lot of elderly people there too, they, they're finnumatters.
Yeah, sure, the monkey is expensive.
It's so, it's so easy, it's, and it's, it's not expensive.
The problem like being, will they understand what the, the different areas are, will they understand what, that's the problem?
I think, back to Commissioner Donald's point, is just make it very simple, make it on maybe the land usage, or-
Just pick the topic.
Yeah, just pick one topic, don't, it wouldn't obviously be able to encompass the entire, um, workshop, um, agenda, but-
You couldn't have a workshop in Brier, where ideas are booked, pecking for.
But I think, but I think when you start talking about land usage and just simple things like that, everybody has an opinion on that. And I think that that's kind of a starting point for you, and for us as a, you know, township, to know how we move forward as a master plan, that land usage is important, you know, what people think about it. And that would be a simple thing to do, if you can't make the workshop for two hours, here's one small survey you can contribute.
So a concern here, Dan?
Is, is there like controls that we're only receiving the input from Groveland residents, and that, and somebody in Reno, Nevada?
Um, so what we do lock, eh, and it's a choice, um, is we can lock multiple IP addresses, so you only get one vote per computer. However, we do encourage spouses to respond, not just one per household, um, sometimes we do encourage youth, so like the village of Peck, fifty percent of their surveys above, are for people that are eighteen and below, which is amazing, um, but, um, otherwise, we trust honesty, and one of the first questions is, is what is your interest in Groveland, you can be a business owner, you can be this, and then I query the results based on that, usually when it's more of a village versus township, you do that specific breakout, 'cause the village folk think differently than the township folk, um, and so you try to make sure you don't have that, you acknowledge the separation on priorities usually, um, so if the village care more about these issues, the townships are still worried about the roads, yada, yada, but that's when you evaluate it based on that input, so yes, that is a question that we ask, and we just hope people are honest.
There's other surveys out there more secure than survey monkey.
That's a, that's a, it's a-
Yes.
Okay, any other comments from the commission?
Make a quick comment?
Oh, yes, please.
Just from, just from a couple of your guys' things, I may have paid you notes again, but I just wanted to, um, answer Mr. Crimmins', um, question about can we just put a line that says no? The answer to your question is yes, you can. They, this has been some of my research, is what can we say or not say because of last year, you, being told that it's being shoved down our throats, we don't have a choice? That's a yes and a no answer to that, um, one of the things is, and even in Vesper's letter, um, that was given out to us last week at the meeting, um, this Henry Brown's stated the question, further requesting responses to whether Oakland County has a compatible renewable energy ordinance, CREEO. Well, we're not Oakland County, and I actually have something here that's viable and really worthwhile.
They represented a new letter that does say Groveland Township and not Oakland County.
In an email, correct, like on the fifth or something.
No, it got, yeah, it got sent as a certified mail.
Oh, it did, okay.
Yep.
So did that come November fifth?
Yep.
Okay, that's one I don't have a copy of yet. Okay, so, so that being said, though, my point is, is that they still don't have all their act together, knowing what our laws are, or not, and who has to actually, local units, what you're talking about, I have the local units here, and it's for the Michigan Township Association to read and understand in regards of everything on renewable energy, regarding the CREEO, regarding a YO, and regarding an unworkable, just a moment, an unworkable ordinance under PA two thirty-three. A developer chooses the MPSC path, if a developer finds a local ordinance too restrictive or unworkable, they can initiate the MPSC citing process instead, which is what you're saying. The MPSC approval is an alternative, the MPSC process provides an alternative pathway for approval that, that bypasses local zoning. Local government does lose control, but a township that adopts an unworkable ordinance will likely not be able to prevent a project from being built, as it will have to go to the state, loss of local funding, because this is what Edward has been talking about for the past year. The township will also lose out on local intervene, vendor funds, sorry, that are only available when a project is approved at the local level under a workable ordinance. The ordinance is still legal, the act of adopting an unworkable ordinance is not illegal, but it is a strategic choice with specific consequences. So that being said, I would just say this, a township can have an unworkable ordinance for PA two thirty-three, but it means a developer, developer will likely bypass the local government and then seek that approval, which they're want, saying they're going to do. An unworkable ordinance is one that is so restrictive that a developer would find it more profitable to use the state-level approval process instead. The township can still adopt such an ordinance, but it risks losing that control. So we do still wanna have some control, but you guys don't have to have a best, you can say, we will or won't allow these types of renewable energy based upon A, B, C, D. That would be the thing from the Michigan Township Association that I would encourage you all to read, it's more than what I would wanna keep you for tonight. You guys are smart people, you could do that on your own, and read what I brought as well, so I'm happy to share that with you tonight, if you'd like. Um, I will say, each member of the board, um, being in a group, and I heard you recommend that, I think that's a phenomenal, um, suggestion that you have, because then you guys can come back and talk about what happened at each of your table. Uh, that's something that I do right now, and when I go to Arizona, and we have taken a university from where it was last year to this year, and I talked to somebody who's no longer there this year, just this week, and the level that it was last year to this year, based upon this type of concept, is tremendous. So just getting more input, the proper amount, or the proper type, is important. I think, I think that was it, I just wanna get some stuff from you, Danielle, if I can, if I could ask you for it.
Okay.
The one like at the front end.
Danielle, is that you?
By the playground, I think that's the name.
Who's touching the pieces?
Can we, are we, public comments done? Returning to the agenda, any further comments from the commission?
Nope, I make a motion we adjourn for tonight.